It's about 30. Call the meeting go order, we do have a quorum present. Turn it over to the city manager.
Mayor and council, I'd like to start with introducing our new Parks and Recreation Director. I'm very excited about this one. Stacy Anaya.
Hello, how are you?
This is your city council.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
With that, Mayor, so tonight we want to talk about the mid-year report. So Gina's going to go through the revenue side and then I'm going to go through some of the major projects that you budgeted for us this year. And I wanted to give you just a status report of where we are. And then when we finish that, we're going to turn it over to David. And David's going to give a presentation on street projects.
Okay, so we'll start with the General Fund, which is a very favorable financial outlook for the fiscal year. Our experience so far this year is above projections from when we were compiling the budget back in August. We aren't going to discuss every fund, but we did include a financial summary for each of the funds in your backup. So we'll just talk about those that have any sort of modifications or variations. The first fund is the General Fund. Operating revenues are performing well. Are now projected to be at 4.7% or 3.8 million over your budget of 80.9 million for a total of 84.1 million.
David's going to be able to spin that.
Oh, yeah. No problem. Operating expenditures are estimated at less than a 1% increase at 692,000. And we'll kind of break down that expenditure as we go along here. First, we'll talk about sales tax. Sales tax is outperforming your projections by 11% so far this year. So we've increased our estimate 2.6 million for a total now of 28, just over 28 million. And believe it or not, that's still a very conservative projection. We only looked at our experience the first six months of the year. If we continue that, we may end up well over 29 million. But you'll remember, we're trying to be as conservative as we can on sales tax, just to kind of hedge against financial resiliency and being able to recover quickly in terms of any kind of economic downturn. Plus, we like to keep our revenue estimates, property tax estimates and all of the revenue at a one-third, one-third, one-third split. So this leaves your sales tax at 34% of your overall expenditures, of your overall revenues. Also, a couple of the reasons why we're up. One of them is our Bed Bath &amp; Beyond latest acquisition, I guess is what you'd call it in terms of economic development. That one, we've already seen almost 700,000 in revenue for just three months' worth of activity. So that's part of the reason that you're up. Another part is, we've had a financial audit recommendation that we change the way we pay for muni services. And we used to show that as an offset to revenue. It's now being shown as an expenditure.
So Muni Services is a company we've contracted with for many years. And what they do is they go in and they look at our sales tax collections. And they make sure, they make sure that the sales tax is sourced correctly. Like sometimes a business will file their sales tax in Carrollton instead of in Lewisville. So they check that for us and look at that on a regular basis. Over the last 10 years, we've collected about 4 million due to those type corrections. So it's a good thing. We just need to change how we budget it.
And you'll see that in several funds as we go through here. But General Fund is the major fund. And again, as this revenue comes in, when it's not budgeted, it rolls to fund balance and enables us to use things out of fund balance for one-time expenditures. So it's a good thing, all in all, for the General Fund. Commercial refuse and landfill host fees are also estimated to be up. This includes waste management, your Camelot landfill, Republic landfills. It also includes your commercial trash collection. You will remember, we budgeted Farmer's Branch revenue for the first time this year, the host fee from them, at 350,000. That's a quarterly payment. We've only gotten one, but it was so high that we're estimating already for 435,000 to end the year rather than 350. So that's going well. That's a 20% increase in just those line items to the General Fund. All other revenue sources are performing as anticipated with the exception of these. And I don't want you to get freaked out by these because they're less than 1% of your overall revenue to the General Fund. So even though we're going to go through these, just keep that in mind, that it's not a huge percentage to your General Fund. Texas, New Mexico Power. This reduction of 60,000 leaves you with a budget projection now of 3.2 million. And that is really a slowdown in growth rather than any sort of decrease. We had budgeted based on a trend and it's just kind of slowed down a little bit more than we thought. That's less than 1% of a reduction in that line item. So Verizon Frontier Cable is down $100,000. This one is more dramatic of a decrease as they're only at 871. And I honestly believe that's a result of their business practices in the last couple of years where a lot of people have switched from Frontier to other.
Yeah, franchises are up.
Yeah, all the other franchises are up. Your fire occupancy inspections, these are down 75,000 to 95,000. And that is primarily a result of some turnover we've had for a large portion of the year in those fire inspectors not being able to be out on the streets performing those inspections. And we think we've got that under control now and back on track. So hopefully that'll just be a blip and we'll be back in trend. The Castle Hills Police. This one is down 136,000 from budget. It's an increase from your actual. We had budgeted thinking that they were going to be bringing on requests for full-time and enhanced. They decided not to do that at the end of the negotiation and went with a private company. So we are backed up our projection for them right now and it's at 287,000. The TASP is your reimbursement for our Medicare cost for the fire ambulance service. And we budgeted that at about 390,000. The state has reduced the percentage that are willing to reimburse in that now. And that's what's causing that decrease. So we'll see that from now on, probably it'll be at this level and maybe continue to go down. We don't know yet how quickly they'll keep reducing that. Warrant revenue is down about 63,000. This also has to do with some injuries that have sustained by the police department and had a vacancy over there for a little bit in the year. And so we're now still close to $1 million in warrant revenue, so that's nothing to be alarmed about. And the last one is your project engineer allocation. This is an allocation we do from our capital projects to the General Fund to help pay for the salaries of the engineers who oversee our capital projects. But because capital projects are skyrocketing in cost right now, we decided not to do that annual allocation back to the General Fund and leave that money over in CIP so that it can help pay for the project costs. And that's those. So this chart kind of shows you all of the General Fund revenues. You can see we're up to 84.8 million from 80.9 million. Taxes, we talked about that being primarily sales and property tax. Property tax, we are already at 99.9% collected for the year, so that one is going as anticipated. Licenses and permits. This includes your building permits, which are up, as well as alarm permits, multifamily inspections. Everything looks pretty on target. Intercol general revenue, that's really just our school resource officer primarily. Charges for services, this is where we saw the landfill and the ambulance fees show up here. Culture and recreation, this one includes your park fees, campgrounds, park entrance, Lila fees. Those are all shown in this line item. Investment earnings are just that. Again, not anything exciting to write home about on an $84 million investment, but something. Signs, fortresses are all your court signs. Other financing sources are miscellaneous and also includes the TIPS to pay back of $1 million that we are paying back for Riverside Road Bridge that we had prefunded a couple of years ago. And then your transfers in. And those are mainly your pilot, payment out of taxes, your franchise fees and your GNA kind of indirect costs from the utility fund. So that's your picture of General Fund revenue. The operating expenditures, these are up only less than 692,000 though, which is primarily in purchase order carryovers from the prior fiscal year of 511,000. And I did include a list of those in your backup. You may or may not remember, but you approved those on December 5th. So you've seen that list before of everything that we carried forward. Salary savings were also from position vacancies. We see that every year. We have 773 full-time employees. And in the utility fund, we have 596. So a lot of that salary savings is going to be seen in this fund. Fuel savings, which we'll talk about on the next page. All of that savings allowed us to reallocate funding where we needed it. 350,000 of that was due to the change in muni service and the way we calculate, the way we reflect that accounting transaction. Storm-related expenses of 152,000 related to the tornado activity and the windstorms that we've had.
Three episodes.
Yes. Primarily, we had the sunshade structures out at Lake Park. That was 92,000 of that. So we had some screening wall change. So this is out of pocket for the city rather than paid for out of insurance. So that's why you're seeing that separate here. Castle Hills TIF annexation studies. This is formulation of that TIF for 70,000 total. Our half of it is 35,000 with Bright paying the other 35,000. And then we've had some credit card fee increases, just trying to improve customer service and being able to pay more of our bills online rather than having to come into and not being able to use their credit card. So that comes at a cost. And for the General Fund, that's up $40,000 this year. Fund balance expenditures, we are going to be looking for a $1.4 million increase there. 970,000 of that is to supplement Midway Road, which David will talk to you a little bit about in just a moment. The Bed Bath &amp; Beyond agreements, we talked about the sales tax going into the General Fund. Well, we have an ED agreement that says we will pay them for the business that they're bringing into Lewisville. It's capped at 700,000. Our original budget, we budgeted at 400,000. So they're outperforming what we thought that they were going to do this year. And we're going to go ahead and budget the full 700,000. If they don't tend to meet that, that'll roll to fund balance, so that'll be there for next year.
Brendan, I were comparing it. We were looking at the last year's sales tax generated by the entire mall and surrounding businesses. And I think by next year, it will be, it's less than Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. That's amazing. The entire mall.
That's what we expected.
That's what we expected.
And it's doing better than what we expected, so that's great. We also have 30,000 for expenses related to the governance issue. Those are legal fees and that issue. And then the purchase order carryovers from the prior fiscal year. So back to the fuel savings. This was something Francis mentioned to me not long ago. I asked him to look, to put this together for us so that we could see. Since this quarter year 10-11, our average fuel usage was 1,367 gallons per piece of equipment or vehicle. As of 15-16, it was down to 905 average gallons per piece of equipment or vehicle. And that's a 34% decrease. And I think that goes to show you that it's really been an intentional and transformative step that the city has taken to become more sustainable. And it's also shown us that sustainability can have a direct increase or reduction in providing those city services. So the GPS system and the city vehicles have really given us a better systematic approach to routing in some cases where we maybe hadn't thought of that in the past. The five Nissan Leaf electric cars, we've got nine hybrid sedans, five vans and Colorado trucks, which are all four cylinders now, which are much more fuel efficient. And then two LPG forklifts. And so being able to transfer to these has really transformed into savings to the General Fund and our other funds to a certain extent.
We'd also expect that GPS systems have reduced the maintenance costs on those vehicles too. Because we're not putting as many miles, we're not driving in circles.
Should, yeah, over the long term, yes.
So is there, because I'm always curious about the offset of this. We've got vehicles now with batteries and that type of maintenance that'll have to be swapped out over time. Do cities have a metric for that conversion? How they can, how you can see, are we offset enough? Or are we just taking a hit on the back end?
And speaking, and talking with Francis about that exact item, he said, you know, the electric vehicles that we have, we have had not one piece of maintenance on the entire time we've had them.
Yeah, and typically the maintenance is much less because there's fewer parts.
It was tires and rotating tires and switching them out. And that's all we've seen so far. So he's over the moon with them so far. So I don't know that we've had them long enough to have a real concrete study, but yeah.
I'm just curious.
I don't know if I can really answer that yet.
Yeah, it'd probably be more of a five to 10-year type of timeframe to look at.
Things are going to have to be a longer-based review.
Not that I don't love this, this is great.
It surprised me. Significant savings.
The other item that you might notice, if you look at the fund summaries, here's an example of fund summaries. You can see where we had an adopted budget to our revised budget. Some of the line items, like here for example, the city manager's office, we had a $1.4 million budget. It's revised to 1.1. Emergency management was 179.0. A lot of these are showing unusual type transactions. So I just wanted to include a slide that shows you, most of those are due to reorganizations, which I know Donna has already shared with you in the past. But I wanted to kind of do a cheat sheet for you there so that you have them as you're looking through your fund summaries. Also, I wanted to mention that the ED manager position would not be filled. I think you had that already in there. And the budget coordinator position has not been filled. We've been trying a couple of different ways to get that and trying different titles for it and haven't had any success.
That one we've recruited extensively. I don't understand it, I really don't.
So hopefully it will be. But the ED manager position will not be in extras budget. The budget coordinator position will still be here somewhere somehow. Fund balance is now expected to be 34.6 million by the end of 2016-17. That's 42% of your operating expenditures are, our goal is always 20%, so we're doing well there. This compares to 28.6 when we originally compiled the budget. The growth is due to savings at the end of last fiscal year as well as increased revenue. So sales tax was up, salary savings helped us. So that amounted to 4.3 million added to our experience so far this fiscal year. Looks to be we will add another 1.6 million. So that's good news for the General Fund. And that's all I have on the General Fund unless you have any questions.
Good news.
The utility fund, operating revenues are performing well at 3.9%. This is $1 million over your original budget of $29 million. It's now at 31 million. Operating expenditures are actually estimated to be virtually flat, less than a 1% decrease at $66,000. Water sales are estimated in the year up 2.6% or $450,000 at 17.5 million. Sewer service estimated in the year up 2.4% at 10.8 million. So both lines are performing well above what we thought projections would have indicated. And again, this is entirely due to weather on the water side, so that can fluctuate. As we all know, within a month or two, we could be totally a different picture here. This is assuming the rest of the year is a normal year again. That's always how we budget. Capital recovery fees. These are estimated at 1.4 million, a $430,000 increase based on year-to-date activity. We always see an increase at mid-year on these. If you'll remember, we budget these very conservatively because as you know, anything can happen to development activity and construction-related activity. So we try to be as conservative as we can here. So your overall revenue picture, we've got 17.5 in water sales, 10.8 in sewer sales. Capital recovery fees are 1.4. And together, these three make up 96.6% of your overall revenue. So if they're doing good, we're doing good. Water sales again are highly dependent, so if I'm back out here in three months going, oh my gosh, utility fund isn't doing well, you'll know that we've had a really dry, hot summer. So, well, I mean, we'll have a really wet summer.
It's raining, stop.
So your operating expenditures are anticipated to remain within your budget. We had the POs from prior fiscal years at 38,000. The salary savings. Here, we've actually had savings in credit card fees. And that's related to the interactive voice response system that we budgeted for utility billing. It hasn't been implemented yet, and so you don't really have the option to pay a lot with credit card fees. And as soon as you do, those fees will go back up. So the first half of the year, you're seeing that savings. As soon as it's implemented, we'll have the expenditure we thought we would. So these leave an estimated savings of 66.8 from the original budget. The utility fund balance does include an increase of $25,000 for utility rate study related Castle Hills. Fund balance is now estimated to be 11.9 by the end of the year, which is 38% of your operating expenditures.
And so Gina's mentioned studies in Castle Hills a couple of times. Obviously, those relate to annexation. So the TIF study has been kicked off. Started this week. And then we'll be moving forward with utility rate studies in a few weeks.
So that's all I had on the utility fund. So well, quickly, again, we're not going to go over all the funds, just kind of where some of the changes are. The Community Activities Fund, this one accounts for donations to animal control is one of the things that we find in there. They actually had more donations from the furball than we had anticipated. And so we've actually got to allocate those so that they can spend those donations. So that's what we're doing in that fund. Hotel motel tax, this one's interesting. We're actually down 3.3% from where we were at this point last year.
That's really surprising to me. So we're doing some more research on that. Could be that you've seen a number of hotels popping up in the cities around us like Carrollton and Denton and the Colony. So that could certainly have some impact. I-35 construction could have some impact. So that number's really surprising, but James is digging in and looking at each of the hotels to see if we can figure it out. But I'm guessing it's just an overall increase in the number of hotels in the area.
It's a trend that's happening Dallas-wide.
Is it Dallas-wide?
Citywides in Dallas are down this year, which means the big hotels are usually, the citywides are sucking up everybody else's business.
That's the theory.
There's a lot of that going on.
We have noticed that there have been a couple of renovations going on. One of the hotels I know shut down half their rooms for a great portion of the fiscal year. And so that can have an impact. And also, we've only noticed two months of the eight months being decreases. So the other ones were doing okay. So it really isn't that much of a decrease in terms of last year, it's kind of just a minor one, but we had budgeted based on a trend, so it's more like a 7% down from budget. So that's why you're hearing about it here. That decreases your estimate there to 4.3 million.
But we also know there are three hotels going under construction here in the next year here in Lewisville, so see you go back on.
And also, you know, we do have a current balance revenue to expenditure of over 697,000. So even if this came in 650,000 less than what we budgeted, it's not going to affect operations. We just won't have that money rolling to fund balance the way we had a budgeted it. And then we do have the supplement out of fund balance of 102,000. If you'll remember, our public arts project, we've decided that whatever money is available at the end of a fiscal year under the arts cap of 15%, we'll roll that over to a capital project the next fiscal year. So this is the money that was available under the cap that we can now add to your public arts project, which will give us a balance of 664,000 in that project. Court technology. Here, we need a supplement to fund a Laserfish interface with our court software for 11,880. That will come out of fund balance. The juvenile pace manager fund, we need 1,610 to properly fund the full-time salary and benefit costs of the one person that's in that fund. So if we don't get hers exactly right, then we have to do a supplement to that fund. The revenue will more than cover the expenditure. It's over $10,000 in that fund, so we're good there. Crime control, the only supplement we're seeing there is again related to the sales tax muni services issue of 43,750. But again, sales tax is up in that fund, 336,000. So this increase isn't going to materially affect that at all. Fire control is the exact same issue. So risk and your health zones are both on target right now, so not on the road. I hate to say that out loud.
But that glass just happened.
It's looking good. This is one though, by the end of the fiscal year, that could change. We can't, we're on a crystal ball on our claims cost, so we're hoping it's going about as we trended, but by the end of the fiscal year, we'll have a better feel for that. In your, in your tech, I'm sorry.
Skin back on it. It's better.
In TIF one, we are looking at a $500,000 supplement for an ED agreement related to the townhouse project at Walters and Mill Street. This will be for the ED agreement as well as the actual parking lot improvements that the city will own. So that would be included in your budget request for this year. And the last one is the 87,000 supplement to fund muni services over N4B. The only other fund that we wanted to talk about tonight was the new fund being added for 16-17, and this is for the JSE-PID. This will just, it will pay for the administration and operation of the district. It's a $42,000 fund. And the revenue comes from a special assessment on the properties within that district. But this was the first time you would see that fund summary, so I wanted to call your attention to it. And that's all I had on the financial part of the mid-year report. Do you all have any questions on it or any funds I didn't talk about?
About everything? It's looking pretty good.
It's looking really good. So I'm going to talk about some of the projects that you budgeted within this fiscal year. I'm going to go by department. So first is in the city manager's office. So Gina talked about all the, some of the changes that we've made in organizational structure. So the first one you see, we added a support position in sustainability. You remember sustainability was in the city manager's office. It's now under Neighborhood Services. We added that support position. And as we step back and look at it, you know, solid waste has really kind of been managed out of our office, that solid waste contract and the sustainability support position has really been dedicated to recycling. And so with Steve's retirement, it really ended up in our office because Steve Backus had been the Public Services Director and became, been an ACM. We've decided it's time for it to go back to Public Services. That's where you normally find solid waste. And so the position I added to sustainability is going to keep that recycling and solid waste, but will be in Public Services. The next is the gateway sign. So it seems like we've been talking about new gateway signs forever and you've not seen them popping up around town yet. But we're getting close. So the design is complete. You know, we had the design for the wider medians and we had to go back and do a design for the more narrow median, so all of that is done. Later in the agenda tonight, we're going to talk about the Green Ribbon Project. The Green Ribbon Project is actually going to pick up two additional gateway signs that you guys have not budgeted. Will actually be paid for through KOB funding, which is a great thing. But, so we're close right now. Our traffic engineer is going out. Got about 11 different signs that are being considered. You guys gave us direction on where to place them. And so the traffic engineer is now just out checking visibility. And once we have those locations verified, then we'll do a bid process. So we hope that we're going to start building these puppy dogs within the next key three months.
Certainly within it, if not soon.
So it is a bit forward.
I heard sooner, that's all I heard.
You know, I'm pretty conservative, so.
I said sooner, mentally.
It's been a lot of work done and they're going to look wonderful once they're done, but it's taken some time. But Steve Backus' sign's up. I don't know if you have noticed the new sign over by the Steve Backus Public Services Center, but it looks really good. Another item that you budgeted in this year's budget is the homeless program support of 164,000. So that money has been awarded to four different agencies. You see that allocation that we've got listed here. So that project has been. Values refresh consultant, you gave us approval to hire this person at 32,000. So this has been ongoing. We kicked off this project in November of 2016. We appointed a culture committee, 20 employees citywide. They have been meeting regularly to look at the organizational culture. How do we go? We have a great culture. How do we make sure that we continue to have this great culture as we hire in new people? And so they've actually gone out and they've looked at other companies like Southwest Airlines and Container Store. So they spent a lot of time researching this. So I'm hoping that I'm actually, I've seen the draft, but we'll have the statement to you sometime in August and then we'll start rolling it out organization-wide in October. The Nature Center, that's been an ongoing conversation. If you're If you remember, you were putting money aside every year for the Nature Center. So you put aside five million last year, three million this year. But because of the overruns in the MGC, the additional cost increases there, that money was allocated to the MGC. So we do have a plan for the Nature Center, though. If you remember, we've got money that we've targeted over the next several years. It'll count amount to a little over four million. And then we'll sell COs against the 4B fund for the tune of about fifteen million. So we have actually completed the design charrette for the Nature Center, and we should be bringing that to you in October. So Community Relations and Tourism, some of the projects going on there. Marty has gotten a lot of press, a lot of very positive press. So it has launched, and the kiosk is now installed. So wherever Marty is, we can actually now take payments. And James has hired a number of part-time people. That really makes a difference when you're talking about a center like the MGC that's, you know, open seven days a week. It's really important to have those part-time hours. So I think he's found that very helpful. We did a lot of investment this year in the MCL also. So we had a safety and security package of a hundred and forty-eight thousand. That's almost complete. Everything's done, but we still have those wooden doors that we're still trying to find a good match for. Once those are, be, once those are replaced, then we'll have the package complete.
I can't wait to test out that security again. That was so much fun the last time.
Yes, you're so good at it. Technology updates, mostly all complete there. Additional events, equipment, tablecloths, and things for rental, pipe and drape, all have been ordered. A few things still left out there to order. We get a new manager, and we're close. James has been interviewing. So we get that person on board, we'll be able to complete all of that. Marketing. In the 2025 plan, what we heard more than anything from the committee was that we needed to do more marketing. You guys added about fifty-seven thousand dollars to James's budget for marketing, and all of those programs are underway. Neighbors Leading Neighbors, the Old Town Visitor Marketing Plan, Lila Marketing, all of that has been focused on this year. As you vote, as you all know, the Public Art Master Plan, it has moved forward, and we should have a final plan by September. Expanded Entertainment for Western Days, I can't tell you yet who the performer is, but they have been hired. Call me individually, and I'll tell you. Live Music Micro Website is going to be launched in mid-June. Lots of new events in the plaza, the St. Patty's in the plaza, the Rocktober Concert. We're going to be adding yoga. And I've been talking with Stacy. We've had her, you know, just a few days, and Eric and I keep embodling her with new projects. But one is Wayne Ferguson, so she's going to be really focused on trying to bring more activities also to Wayne Ferguson. And the Water Across Shore Activities this weekend at Lake Park Finlay Council, two years in a row. So finally with no flooding, it's going to happen. Gina mentioned early, earlier, the Interactive Voice Response, the IVR and Enhanced Payments has not been implemented yet. Finance has been hard at work on that. They spent a lot of time working on that project, and they're very, very close and should begin implementation in July. Question?
Just Eric and I have a bonding moment. I'm sorry, Chris.
Neighborhood Services, as you know, the needs assessment, head planning consultant, that's underway. We added another outdoor warning system siren, that's complete. Economic Development and Planning, we spent a lot of time at Retreat talking about the Small Area Plans, the Community Character Manual, and the Revision to the Land Development Code. So we have signed the contract, as you know, that was on an earlier agenda. And the two areas that you designated at Retreat for the Small Area Plans will be kicking off in August. ED agreements, seventy percent of those agreements have all been processed today. We've added that new planner, and as we mentioned earlier, the manager is on hold due to the fact Ms. Reinicki's going to stay with us a couple of more years. Parks and Recreation, the Lake Park Camping Road Improvement, complete. Expanded mowing, I think they've done a really good job this year maintaining our medians, very, very good job. Lake Master, Lake Park Master Plan, I put that on hold until Stacy got here. It's another thing on her to-do list. Recycling Containers, where we were taking all the existing containers and repainting them, that's complete. Our pools are both open, that's a big yay, so that's complete. And if you remember, we added, we invested a lot in Railroad Park. The park had gotten old enough where we needed to replace a lot of the umbrellas and things like that, and that's all we've done.
Notice that the, the new naming that's up to date now, it's not, it's not the old Toyota.
Yeah, Lone Star.
Yeah, Lone Star.
Notice that today.
Public Services, now this is the department. If their project's not over a hundred thousand, I usually don't even mention it. So they have a lot of other projects than those listed here, but you can see a lot of their things like the SCADA system, that are, those things are in design. And here, we really focused on trying to get tools in play so that we could go on and track our inventory report card. So that would be the water distribution and wastewater collection system assessment, the Castle Hill Street Condition Survey, and then that storm sewer video inspection. So we'll get a better feel for the state of our infrastructure. Then you see various equipment, hydro excavator, intake generator and such have all been purchased and installed. It was a long recruitment, but we have finally hired our Business Information Analyst, correct? Yes, yes, you started. And I will tell you, I've been very impressed with facilities. They've done just a great job in getting this building repainted, and that's been quite the process where you've done section by section. So we're getting very close to being done, and I think it looks really good. The new carpeting and paint looks nice and fresh and new again. And they've also, we've replaced eight roofs this year, and in the pack-up, I don't know if you noticed in the back-up we saw. Don't those look good?
Yeah.
So we've got a chore to do. Yeah, I thought, tremendous job, really, really good job. Old Town Holiday Lighting, those lights have been ordered. As most of you know, we had to deal with the structure of the association. I think that's all now been worked through, and we should be able to go forward with the installation of those lights. So that's Public Services. Engineering, they hired a new civil engineer. We started a number of months ago.
I've been noticing the street striping, by the way, so thank you.
Yes, I didn't mention that, but yes.
Yeah, that needs a, that needs a, especially since we have such a good compare and contrast with.
With Flowerman.
Our, our big freeway.
Yeah. Well, not often do we get to do demos of city equipment, but on this one for the Police Department, the robot is here, and we're going to show you how it works.
Cool. Is this that scene in Robocop where it comes in?
If you remember, the great thing about this is it works in conjunction with some existing robots that we have.
Chee talked a little bit about how courts, this is where we go into certain crime scenes.
Absolutely. Primarily used for those issues where we suspect there's a bomb or improvised explosive device of some kind. This can be used to go in and look at that device, carry that clay machine beside it. These are the things that provides us a way of safety, so we're not sending a body in there, you know, to do that.
David, you look nervous.
Is this one that you go up to stand? Because I know the small ones, they said.
So what he's going to do is he's going to grab that bottle of water there, hopefully. Hopefully he doesn't squeeze it. Imagine the operator sitting, you know, outside, and he's looking at a monitor, you know, and trying to use that to, to guys. We did, we still have time to train him to ensure that when it comes to a real deal, that we can, you know, operate it effectively. You know, typically this arm could be used to open a door, you know, pick up packages, you know, that sort of stuff.
All about safe and lax. Not setting our officers in places.
Yeah.
And it's cool.
It is cool.
Really? Yeah. Cool.
Julie, are you worried about the new carpet?
Do I? It's just water.
Are you okay?
And these probably will be the worst that we're going to see.
Gee, pal, do you put the sleeve on with the robot?
It's too hard.
I feel like I want to help. Just sit it in the middle of it. There you go.
You two do it!
Cheer it up.
No helping.
I'm sorry.
Uh-oh.
There goes.
So close! No, cut the red wire! Look at that!
Watch the squeeze.
Don't squeeze it too hard.
There it is.
A little hard.
Poor Jenny.
What it'll leave is it's going to have a deep room, look up this other door, and let it go upstairs. You guys can kind of watch that while you're discussing.
Very cool. Thank you, Chee.
Yes, ma'am.
We also have the SWAT, SWAT Equipment Vehicle that's been ordered, that's actually being built for us.
It is, and we have a revised base actually going to be delivered on July the sixth.
July the sixth, okay.
It's a little bit longer than we first thought.
And that replaced vehicle you'd had, how long, Chee?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, so.
That was the van that's like candy on the side?
This one will last another twenty. Fire Department, so because you know that we always have to have equal equipment, so they did bring their interactive ALS adult and pediatric mannequins, and those are really cool. If between meetings, you guys can go out there and see it, they've got that set up for you. Sea Lugs, we're getting close. We're still looking at the prototypes on the Sea Lugs.
Yeah, decision has been made. We should be working on a field around now once that's, I think we've got about three to four.
And the All-Trend Vehicle Service in June.
ATVs.
For Western Days, Lila.
ATVs, All-Trend is finished decal and then training, and we'll be ready to go. Hopefully we'll have it to be able to use FBV in any of our fireworks shoots on July fourth. And obviously, Western Days will be the next big event.
Human Resources, HR Coordinator was hired back in December. Equipment they got, some additional AEDs have been added, three of those. ITF got all the wireless access points completed. I know that sounds boring, but it's really important, and we're all depending on technology. Electronic citations, you remember we're expanding the number of electronic citations that are being utilized. They'll be complete in August. Library, we have hired our bilingual librarian, hired back in April.
Saw that announcement on social media, and some of the new projects are already starting, that's great.
Really some cool stuff there. Also have all the furniture replacement and repair complete. Had some, some really raggy furniture in the library, all that's gone now. Laptops are available now for public use, there are ten of them that can actually be checked out, so that's really cool. Then they were doing some remodeling of some various spaces within the library that should be complete in June. And Enhanced Digital Service and Collections should be, is complete, thirty-seven thousand. And then finally, Julie's hard at work on her codebook supplement, almost complete in June. So those have been some of the major projects that you funded this year. And as you can see, we're moving right along, and we've completed most of them. So with that, that's your mid-year report, and I'm going to turn it over to David, and we're going to talk about streets. We met with you already a couple of times. David's gone back, and he's looked at the projects and where we could decrease costs. For example, if we're doing a whole neighborhood, if some of those roads have a higher rating, we may have taken some of the roads out. And so we've been able to bring some of those costs down, so let David walk through it with you.
First thing we wanted to do is give you a little bit of a detailed account on what's going on with Valley Ridge, because we know everybody's interested in that. Kind of going back to the beginning, this, this project was funded back in 2010 with an estimate of ten million dollars. By the time we bid the project in 2014, we were up to four, over fourteen million dollars. Almost fifteen million. So, you know, there we already had a fifty percent increase in the original estimate.
When we started talking about Valley Ridge, 2010, I mean, I mean, I've, I've seen comments about, you know, how did, why doesn't the city hit their marks on the cost assessment? But it's difficult. I mean, we're going to look at historic trends, and that's what we're going to use. And that's what we did use. In fact, we increased it. Usually we've done that around three percent, we bumped it to five percent. But sometimes projects take longer than expected. It's just, that's, that's how it works when you're building large capital projects.
Well, actually, back in 2010, our bid prices were actually coming in lower than what we had estimated in a lot of cases. So, you know, we certainly weren't in the same climate that we are now. Of course, we've had three change, we've had three large change orders on this project totaling three point three five million. So the cost to date for design and construction is just over eighteen million dollars. We've funded those overruns by using the contingency that we always add when we bid a project. We've had to take money from our railroad street project, Northeast Old Town and Northwest Old Town in order to supplement Valley Ridge. There's a possibility that we're going to be seeing another one point three million dollars in RTR funds. And if and when we get those, what we'll do is we'll apply those to Valley Ridge, and then take some of our local money out of Valley Ridge to back fund probably the Northwest Old Town streets.
And Northeast Old Town, really because of some of the changes that's going on on the east side, we really feel that that may be pretty significantly impacted. Some of those roads may actually even be closed as you look at some of those changes. So we're really, it's probably good to delay that one.
And then moving forward also, because of all the cost overruns and all the inflation that's been involved with this project, we will be going back to visit with Dutton County to talk about, you know, possibly some additional county money. Of course, you know, we've talked about this, besides the overruns on Valley Ridge, we've obviously have our inflation issue. For this fiscal year, these are the projects that we need to fund. We expect that they're going to go under construction. And so we've got an estimated cost of six point six million dollars on the Old Town TOD, which is our main and mill project. We originally estimated five million dollars. We think, as, as we go through these slides, you see where we've kind of come up with the money. But we think by reducing scope on some other projects, we can make up the difference on the Old Town Main and Mill project. Midway Road is a project that Gina mentioned earlier, and it appears that we're going to be roughly nine hundred and seventy dollars short of being able to fund that. We expect that to bid later this summer. Moving into the next fiscal year, seventeen eighteen, we've got our Timberbrook Project. This is where we get into some different options that staff's recommending to reduce costs a little bit. This is where we get into some different options that staff's recommending to reduce costs a little bit. Right now, we've got a little bit over eleven million dollars available. We're expecting costs of fifteen million dollars if we did the whole project. By deleting three streets, well, actually, it's four streets. There's three cul-de-sacs and then one short street, all of which have a little bit higher pavement ratings than the other streets. We can save just over two million dollars and bring that down to thirteen or three. College Street, it was originally intended to go all the way from I-35 to Mill Street. Again, looking at the pavement ratings, the east end of the project from Cowan to Mill is in worse condition. So that almost cuts the project in half in terms of scope, so we can reduce that cost. We have three point two eight five available originally. We expected it to cost almost five million dollars. We think we can get that down to two point five, and that'll give us seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, all of which will get moved into the main and mill. Our McKenzie-Hembry Neighborhood Rehab. Right now, we have one point, almost one point eight million dollars available. This is about a five and a half million dollar project. If we remove a number of the streets from the scope and simply do the main streets, cut through the subdivision of McKenzie-Hembry, we can reduce that cost to three point one million dollars. We're still gonna have to come up with an additional one point three million dollars. Our North Mill project. Again, by reducing the number of streets and only doing North Mill and then postponing all the other residential streets, we can get this cost down to roughly one point seven five million dollars, and that would give us five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to apply to other projects. So for fiscal year seventeen eighteen, you know, we'll be looking for roughly three point four five million dollars.
So you'll see us actually budgeting that in your proposed budget.
Twenty eighteen nineteen, starting with Holborn's Prairie. There's really nothing we can do with the Holborn's Prairie project to reduce it. So we're, right now, we've got a cost estimate of almost nine million dollars. We've got seven point four available, which means we'll have to come up with roughly one point five. Our South Keighley project. Again, we're considerably short in terms of, you know, the project budget versus, you know, the at-cost estimate. By delaying a piece of Keighley that's south of Purnell, which is frankly the most problematic section to try to build anyway, we can reduce that cost to two point five million, or I mean, I'm sorry, three point, you know, three million dollars, and that'll give us a little bit of money that we can apply somewhere else. Northwest Old Town Streets, we mentioned that earlier. We've got three point one right now. We think it would cost roughly seven point six. By deleting DeGahn and Edna Street and then simply overlaying Edna, we can reduce that to five point six million. The reason we selected Edna and DeGahn, DeGahn was recently milled and overlaid by our Public Services Department, so it's actually in pretty decent shape right now. And Edna, although it hasn't had any recent work on it, the pavement condition is a little bit better than the rest of the streets. So, you know, I think we think we can get by with just doing a mill and overlay there. Mill at Business 121 Intersection. You know, there's really nothing we can do to reduce the scope on that. So, you know, we're just about three hundred thousand dollars short there. And Civic Circle, same thing, relatively small project, nothing we can really do to reduce it, so we're gonna be just a little bit short on it. So in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we're gonna be looking at about four point four million dollars shortage. Corporate Drive, as I indicated last time, we think we're gonna be fairly flush on it in terms of the base project. We've got Lenny Hughes here this evening, and he can visit with you a little bit, you know, after the end of this slide presentation. What staff is recommending for Corporate Drive is to not do any of the upgrades other than design the bridge, so that we can do the upgraded trails later.
We might have to talk about that in detail and tell you the importance of that, and how it ties in with the trail system in the metroplex.
Yeah, and once we finish this little slideshow, then Lenny has a few slides that he would like to show you and explain how, why that's important to have the upgraded trails. The Northeast Old Town Streets, all that money has been moved to other projects. If we were gonna build it the way it was anticipated, it would be a roughly two and a half million dollar project. Staff is recommending that we spend a million dollars just to mill and overlay and replace utilities. Valley Parkway Project, part of the two thousand fifteen bond program, is gonna be roughly, not quite, a half million dollars short. So that gives us roughly two million dollars short in fiscal year nineteen twenty. That was, we only covered the first few years, because we're gonna be, if you look at all the outer years of our bond program, all the way out through 2025, we're gonna be roughly thirteen million dollars short on those outer year projects. But of course, we can't predict what inflation's gonna do between now and then, and we may have other funding opportunities that, you know, will come up. So, you know, we hated to get into the details on some of those and kind of wait until we get a little bit closer. And so with that, we'll let Lenny talk about Corporate Drive a little bit.
Good evening. Again, my name is Lenny Hughes, the Director of Blask Park Catcher Plan at Paff Associates. And I've had an opportunity to work with the city and the citizens to develop the Corporate Drive roadway and trail project. Excellent. Just a brief background, we have a presentation in April, and have looked at the overall trail project, again, here at River Park and going eastward over to the city limits extending over to 121. This three point two mile roadway section, next slide, focuses on and looks at crossing the green centerpiece, which was identified in the city's vision for looking at green space and enhancements, and celebrating that point on the community there. This roadway is safe, but also encompasses trails and bike facilities, next slide. This ties into the 2011 bike and trails master plan, as well as the parks plan. It looks at on-street facilities as well as enhanced sidewalks along Corporate Drive, tied into the regional development highlighted there in the purple dash. The importance of this is that this is a regional trail network, which encompasses the North Central Texas Council of Government, which looks at ten, the ten counties, provides access to over a hundred and five communities within the North Central Texas region here. Louisville plays a major key role in that, providing access to other communities within the region here. The importance of this, that North Central Texas Council of Government has identified Dillon to Dallas and the Dallas to McKinney as a major trail network that will provide regional access within the region. It also identified the east-west connection from Fort Worth to Dallas as that third segment here with the regional, for regional trail opportunities, next slide. So going back to Corporate Drive, one of the importance of what that means to the citizens and to the city here as far as a transportation network, next slide. Originally, it looked at a base bid, and the base bid looked at having a ten-foot wide sidewalk, which is a minimum for actual standards, as well as a five-foot wide sidewalk here on the, that parallels a four lane divided median for Corporate Drive. What this looks at also is there's anticipating another fifty thousand residents with some of the fast development that's happening up along the 121 corridor. It'll provide access from the citizens to River Park here, build this high bike trail system and sidewalk connection. As part of our auction, we looked at another op, next slide, please. We looked at enhancement option, that looked at a two dual ten-foot wide sidewalks or trails that would provide that pedestrian access in the area. This would be large enough to handle the capacity of people that are riding bikes as well as walking along the roadway and trail network along Corporate Drive. We've since then entertained another option that looked at a twelve-foot wide trail, one-twenty's trail, and a five-foot wide walk. Both of these latter two options would provide the appropriate pedestrian connection and bicycle access to the regional development here that this would tie into. Again, so the importance of that, and I've added some numbers of, I think the base bid is about one point one or almost one point two million. The twelve and five-foot wide trail in the walk is one point three, and the dual ten-foot wide trail is about one point five million. So the cost is not that much, it's about four hundred thousand dollar difference from the base bid to the other enhancement options for Corporate Drive. The importance of this, when we start to think about the regional trail network, that the COG has also comes out with an annual, every two years, for Texas Alternatives Transportation Grant. Their last call, which just happened recently here in February of 2017, the next anticipated call will be in 2019. We've recently helped the city with garbage trail project, which we got about one point seven to one point eight million dollars in trail funding for the community. So we see if we decide to go forward with this project, there may be other funds available to help offset some of the expenditures that you may foresee with Corporate Drive here. So again, looking at the overall, the region, and how important that is. Trail network plays into the overall regional development, which is identified here in red. Corporate Drive is again that major COG or link that will provide access to multiple communities of the colony, Carrollton, open to hollowed-ins and to Dillon there, and on forward down to Dallas. So this ends and concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
So council, we'd like to move forward with adding this option, and we will seek Lenny's help and a fund for that grant. I think we would be likely very successful in getting that grant, just because of the nature of this trail, so central to the region.
You don't get to that without this.
You don't. It's important.
Seems like everything negative on.
Just a question, so the option that we're going for is the one with the two-sided trail, one side?
The one side.
Five twelve?
Okay.
Five twelve.
Okay.
And the additional money on Corporate Drive was related to making the bridge wider.
So some of the other enhancements we talked about earlier with Corporate Drive were more landscaping type options, which can always be added. This one's important, but you only have one opportunity to build it.
Don't get it to over.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll be filming. Walk through the agenda real quick, and then we'll go ahead front and see what we have out there. Divocation by Councilman Ferguson, followed by the pledged to flags, Councilman Jones. Then C, item one, public hearing.
So changes you're gonna start seeing along I-35, so this is the Mitsubishi car dealership, so I-35 expansion to the part of the property where the cars are displayed, so they'll actually be coming in, tearing down the three buildings that exist, building one, a nice new facility there. Some of the vehicles move into the rear of the project.
And this is phase two part, right?
Yes.
Number four. Now we're down to the consent, have a file. Item six. Item seven.
I wanted Keith to spend just a moment talking about the ozone study.
I'm actually gonna defer to Karen here a little bit on some of the, some of the more technical information involved in it. Big picture, water treatment there, treatment plant here at Cowan and Jones. This is Cowan here, that's Jones. And then we've got two intake structures. We pull water out, raw water out of Louisville Lake, comes up here. It's a conventional plant right now, we're talking about adding ozone, in this case, not as a primary treatment, but as a taste and odor primarily treatment. Right now, we use powder activated carbon to treat for taste and odor, and this process would allow us to get out of that carbon business. So Karen, why don't you kind of walk us through the process?
So basically, what ozone does, ozone is a very strong oxidizer, and you feed in pure oxygen, and it's, there's an electrical generation which hydrolyzes that oxygen bond and then creates ozone. What we're asking for in the evaluation processes is really to look at the water quality that we have and make sure with bench test that the water will work properly for how we treat water, that if we do go ahead with ozone, that everything will work properly, and we don't have bromide formation and carbohydrates, which can cause problems later on. And like Keith said, we're really looking at this for taste and odor. Taste and odor becomes a problem for us seasonally in the summer times, when we have that lake turned over, we get the osman and MIB that comes out from algae. And the problem that we're gonna have right now is now that we're feeding, we feed carbon right now, and now we're gonna start probably in July with the copper ion generation. That copper doesn't work as well with carbon, and so we're gonna have to start feeding more and more carbon, which gets more expensive. So we really wanted to look at this. We're gonna be going to ozonation in the future anyway, just because of the regulations are gonna push us that way. So we decided we'd like to look at a basin approach for ozone that would help us treat that a little bit better right now. This, the first picture up on top showed a more conventional ozone, and then the smaller one was, it's okay, the smaller one was a pinnacle model, which is a much smaller one. And this talks about the benefits, the benefits for the smaller side, which was what we're looking for, is for taste and odor, enhancing coagulation and filtration. And then for the future, what we really will be looking at probably 2022, we're really gonna be looking at disinfection byproducts, which are the issues that the regulations are gonna drive us to going to ozonation.
And it's not cheap.
No. So like we said before, we feed liquid oxygen, it goes through a generator. It's a process that hydrolyzes that, the oxygen and forms the ozone. Then what we have to do, we have to go back and collect that ozone, because we can't emit that back out. And this is basically, we looked at ozonation probably about five years ago. We decided to kind of put it on the back burner. We did upgrades to our carbon systems to try and handle a lot more of that taste and odor issue that we knew we were gonna have. But now that, you know, with the zebra muscles coming and we're having to feed copper, we're just gonna have to feed a whole lot of carbon, and we won't be as effective. And so we wanted to look at that right now and be a little more proactive in getting ready for the taste and odor issues as they start coming forward.
So kind of a big question back on there. Big picture, just a preliminary study. We've got an engineer involved who's gonna do some bench testing. He's gonna see, you know, quantities, how much, how big of a footprint, where we would do for primarily taste and odor, how that would then work for the future wider scale disinfection processes in ozone. processes and ozone. The outcome of this will be a report and some recommendations, probably some types of equipment that would work best in our situation, and then we would come back to you if we, if we choose to move forward with a detailed design, we'd come back to you for approval of that process.
I've got a couple of questions on this, and, you know, it's completely different industries, but a failed attempt at ozone before. One, is this a proven technology that's been used in a lot of different places and it's not new and cutting edge or anything like that?
Yeah, it, it is, Karen, I don't know if you wanna.
We've got Opportunity, Denton, uh, Dallas, Fort Worth, uh, everyone, there's a lot of area cities that actually use St. Louisville Lake water is, is used with ozonation, so we, we know that it work well.
Okay, and the second question is, the equipment that does the, makes the ozone, is it going to be an enclosed area? What I've used with ozone equipment before, they swore it would not make anybody sick, and my entire staff was always sick until we quit using this.
This wouldn't be inside, this week room would be outside in yard, right?
Well, and it depends on how we do the approach, the, the basin approach, so that small pinnacle unit, it, it would be in an outside building, uh, and then the other large generators, if you go to the large units, if, if we decide to take that on and that's the best direction, those are all outside too, and you can see that, uh, yeah, those are all in that blue area right there, you would actually, uh, have pure oxygen area, and then you have the conversion area and the generation area.
So the air's not gonna be in with another building where employees are working?
No. Our employees are, are all the way to the left, yeah.
So, so this, this is an interesting picture, this is actually our HHW facility over here, so we probably with this initial phase, we'll try to maintain our existing footprint, we may work on bumping the fence line out a little bit there, but that would be a full-blown, uh, kind of a final.
Yes.
Outcome of, of a full plan there. Any other questions?
I've talked with a couple of folks in Denton, their, their city council especially, was pleased with how that system was rolled out up there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're down to number eight. Nine.
So this is one of the first pieces of public art, uh, that we will be purchasing directly, this is part of the MGC, Chris James.
Hi, Jim.
Want to share a little bit about the artist?
Absolutely. There are some sample photos in your backup memo, there's also some little book that you've shared with us, so we, uh, even though we're just now bringing the contract to you, staff's already very excited about how this project has gone so far. This was all new to us, we had never done a public art project before, we weren't really sure how to go about it, uh, when we drafted a RFP, we posted on an international website called cafe.org, call for entries, and honestly, we were just hoping we'd get 20. If we could just get 20, we feel like we actually would have a choice to make and we could defend it, uh, we got 143 proposals, and they came from across the United States, Canada, Mexico, South America, Asia and Europe, so it was truly an international process. Um, we hired Jim Ware as a consultant to help guide us through this process and through the public art master plan. He took the 143 and, and using his expertise, he narrowed it down to about 45, he felt were capable and qualified artists for this project, and, uh, we then had a selection team of, uh, staff from ICL Grand, from Harks, and also, uh, from the Harks community that came in and helped, and went through those 45, uh, proposals, and these are artists that have stuff that you've, you've probably seen during your various travels around the country, and even in the metroplex, you've seen work by these artists. Uh, we selected three that stood out among the crowd as a finalist, brought them to the list now for interviews in front of the panel, first one came in, we were impressed. Second came in, we thought, yeah, that's pretty good, third one came in, when he left, we looked at each other and said, that's our guy. It was unanimous in the committee, there really was, was, it was not even close, and that is Andrew Dufford with Chio Studios. He's based in Denver, his office is actually less than a mile from the BRS office, uh, the architects on the project, and they have worked together before, so that helps. Uh, we didn't know that when we, when we selected him. Um, his most noteworthy project is at the, uh, the Grand Canyon National Park, where he has three related projects, there's pictures in there, uh, that are phenomenal, remarkable projects, it took more than a year to install, and now receive millions of visitors every year. He also has done a lot of other public art projects, some of them involving recreation type centers, so he's got experience with it, with integrating his work into a building, not just building the statue and throwing it in a courtyard and saying, there it is. Uh, he works with the architects, the design process, he, he'll act with the public, we'll have a meet, meet the artist activity at some point later on this year, uh, he takes it seriously, and you will have a chance to meet him if, if this contract is approved, I think he'll be very pleased.
I'll just have him the other way.
Yep.
That's good stuff.
Very exciting.
It's nice to see that many international places interested in putting something.
They're shocked.
Okay. Uh, number 10.
This one's interesting also, so with our new visitors information center, uh, we have space for historical display, and James and his team had some conversations with, uh, some experts in Denton about, uh, questions we had about preservation and storage, and they said, hey, you know you can actually contract with Denton County to do this, you can, how much does that cost? It's free. So this is a great partnership, uh, with the Denton County Historical Commission, and so they will be working with us to actually display those artifacts and then rotate the, the different, uh, displays and then maintain and preserve those for us. It's a great deal.
So I have a couple of quick questions on that. We have access to our, our, our materials at any time, I mean, of course, we'd wanna be cooperative and whatnot, but there's not a, not an issue there. The other one was, this commission is relatively new or replacement for, there was a historical commission a few years ago that kind of blew up, now maybe I'm getting Denton Courthouse mixed up with.
This is actually an office of the county.
Okay.
Those are two different rooms.
Yeah, there's two different groups.
And the other one was the problem.
And the other one's the problem, okay.
Private, private organization has struggles, this is actually the Denton County Office of Cultural History, and, um, they already have agreements like this with Pilot Point and I think Argyle, and we will by far be the largest city they'd have done this with, they're very excited for the opportunity.
Yeah, I saw Commissioner Eads at a, uh, at then, he was very excited to finally have something in Southern Denton County.
That's a, it's been a big push for him, so, that's all I can do for you.
Can I just move on to item 11? Item 12, which we've asked you to pull this, is that correct?
Uh, item 12, I don't think has to be.
It does, this is your item La Pafa, why does it need to be pulled?
Uh, the, uh, the state decided we didn't need a La Pafa after all.
Oh, okay, so never mind, we're just taking you out this end.
It decides it doesn't need us to tell them that it's okay.
Okay, okay.
So whoever.
Just need to be pulled from consent and no action needs to be taken.
Okay, so whoever does this, just remember that.
Yeah, the project still exists, uh, it's still, uh, a green ribbon project along 407 and Business 121. I mentioned it earlier, we'll have two additional, uh, gateway signs actually covered by KOB.
Okay, down to item 13. Okay, item 14, and, can I hand this out?
Absolutely.
Okay. I did all this, Julie just typed it up. But, uh, this is a list and, uh, I've already split up the groups and said for one short right now, I'll work on the last group myself, and I may ask for help on it, but, uh, if there's any problems, y'all can tell me when, after the meeting, and, uh, otherwise, we just need to get started on this as soon as we can, and Julie, we'd like to have this before.
It'll be the item on June 19th to do the reappointments and the appointments.
So we need, she needs to know it early, so we, she could say if there's any prob, any duplicate boards that we have more than one person.
So will we, we'll get a notebook on this like in the past?
It's in, it's already in drop box.
Okay.
Okay.
With your paper.
Anything else right now?
No, sir.
Okay.
I want a three green button.
A little journey and, uh, go out and look at the stuff in the, in the lobby, and, uh, invite the public to go out there too, and, uh, we'll make it, we'll be seven apart. We call tonight's meeting to order Louisville City Council, first item of business is invocation given by Councilman Ferguson, uh, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Jones.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Okay, we're gonna go out of order here for just a minute, uh, we have a guest with us tonight that, uh, we're gonna have come up and say a few words, Representative Simmons?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here, you know, uh, I represent three cities, and Louisville being one of those, I, I'm really fortunate to be able to represent actually three cities that are operated very well, Carrollton, Lewisville and Highland Village, and I feel a little spoiled when I talk to some of my colleagues down in Austin that complain about how their cities are run, so I just wanna congratulate you and commend you on the work that you all do and how y'all work together, Donna and her work and her team's work that is seamlessly when, when Clyde left, I mean, just, just an awesome job. I wanna give you a little bit of update on what went on during the legislative session, specifically how it might affect the city of Louisville and other cities. Uh, one of the things for the city of Louisville specifically, and Donna and I were just talking about this, is that the very last minute, we were able to get, uh, a bill passed that will allow the city of Louisville to build a hotel and convention center and utilize some of the tax revenue that would normally go to the state for a period of time to help with that project. That's not an additional tax on, on anybody in Louisville or anything like that, it's a normal, uh, tax that comes when you stay in a hotel, but this portion of it, the state's portion, will be able to stay with the city of Louisville for a period of time, and it's something that's been used by other cities as well, so just wanna commend Donna and her team's work on that, and we were able to get that across the finish line, um, here right at, the day before, the day before we ended the session, the governor still has it on his desk, so we're all hoping and praying that he just lets that one slide and doesn't get a veto pin on that, which I don't think he will, he knows those things are important to local development. Couple of other things that probably would have an effect on you all is, uh, the Denton County Transit Authority, this is a minor thing, but it is important, is there, they were having to, even on really small services, seek bids for every single thing that they did, and so, uh, other entities like this were, have been able to change the statute to allow them not to have to seek competitive bids for very small items, I mean, they would have to seek bids on things like office supplies, right, you know, paperclips and things like that, so we were able to get that passed, that'll help DCTA run more, uh, run more effectively, and then because Louisville is so close to DFW and a lot of people in Louisville travel all the time, one of the challenges that Lewis, the DFW has had is that when someone would send out a freedom of information request, like the newspapers might sometime, they didn't have any way or any authority to remove the private information away from that, so people's names and things were going out, so we able to pass a bill that DFW, when those information requests come in, they can redact the private information so that nobody's privacy is taken away by that. A couple of other things that happen, uh, that are, that are in a bigger sense, and one of the things I think we'll go back into special session for is the property tax scenario. Uh, we, the Senate and the House did not agree on what to do about that, I feel confident that the governor will put that back on, uh, the call to go back and relook at how we would handle property taxes, you know, you hear it as well, of course, the city's portion of the property tax is actually a very small portion, uh, the school districts are the largest portion of our property tax system, but everybody kind of gets caught up in the whole scenario, so you'll wanna pay it, keep paying attention to that, uh, let us know your thoughts on that. Uh, the other thing, uh, that I think that is important to, to cities like Louisville so that you don't have to have additional regulations yourself, is we did pass a statewide, what we call Uber bill, so that Uber can operate statewide, you don't have to worry about having a separate ordinance for them, uh, it's all taken care of in that way, if somebody lives in Louisville, wants to work for Uber, they can work in Flower Mound or Louisville or anywhere they want to, which I think is a great benefit to the citizens here in Louisville. Uh, I, uh, passed a bill, uh, that doesn't affect city elections, but it does affect general elections, and that is to eliminate the one punch voting. One of the great things about city elections is they're nonpartisan, and so people have to go down and know the individual, right? They can't say, well, that person's a D or an R, so therefore I'm gonna vote for them. Well, in the, in the general elections, like I'm a part of, the people can just punch one thing, Democrat or Republican, and never even know who may be at the bottom of the ticket. I don't think that's good government, 41 state, 41 other states don't do that, so we passed a bill that effective in 2020, you'll have to go down and vote for every single person in every election, which I think will be a positive thing for Texas, it'll make us have better elected officials, so we were excited to be, excited to be a part of that. I think Louisville, Chief Kerbo has already been a part of this, but you know, we did pass, uh, what a lot of people are calling sanctuary cities legislation, I think Louisville is already, probably already conducting itself in the, in the, in a manner that complies, certainly complies with federal law, and, and, uh, I don't think there's a bunch of changes, this, uh, 287G scenario, I'm not exactly sure how that works, but, uh, there are some things that you'll need to make sure that you're aware of related to that, and so you'll, and I'm sure there'll be litigation related to that as well, uh, voter ID, we passed an updated voter ID law that the, that the courts ask us to change, um, and, uh, that will be coming out, and, again, because of your city elections and everything, you'll need to pay attention as to what that is, and, and the Secretary of State will be getting that information, get, getting that information out to you. Uh, we, we also had some extra money that went in, uh, for, I think we put together a project for, uh, bulletproof vests for some of our officers around the state, uh, that was very important, Senator West from Dallas helped lead that effort, uh, but it was a, you know, the great thing about, um, Texas and the way our system works is that a lot of bills are filed, 6,700 bills were filed, but only 1,200 passed, and it's really set up to do that, is, as Donna and Rudy and others will tell you, it's very hard to pass a bill, we remember our, our, uh, our bill for the, uh, Camelot, and, which is an odd name for a landfill, but it is a name anyway, uh, how long it took us to get that done, but you have to be persistent at it, and I'm sure, uh, that Donna and Rudy and others have seen that, but it actually works good for Texas, 'cause it makes sure that good ideas come to the top, and then bad ideas usually don't make it, so it's an honor to, uh, serve y'all and represent you in the, in, in the State House in Texas, I hope I'm doing a good job for you, uh, my door's always open to you or any of the citizens here, and I'd love to have the opportunity, uh, if there's something else that I can be doing for you, or something you have a concern with or question about, please feel free to give me a call, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Representative Simmons.
Representative Simmons, would you address one more issue that's been of interest, and that is texting? Sure. Oh, texting, yeah, we did pass a statewide, finally, after four times, statewide texting while driving, again, on the governor's desk, I believe that he will let that, will sign that or let it go this time, um, if, I don't, the, the city of Louisville have its own ordinance on that, so. Just distracted driving. Yeah, you'll be covered under that, and it'll be, I mean, it's a, it, it, it will become a, a, a fine to be texting while driving, I mean, it is a safety issue, and I know it's a freedom issue as well, and it's something that I struggled with the first session, but I tell you, you don't have to sit in, I was on the transportation committee where these are heard, you don't have to sit in on very many, uh, parents telling about their young teenagers that got killed because of texting and driving, because of just distraction, and I know people say we have a distracted driving law already, I understand that, but anything that we can help, uh, make it safer, I think is a good thing to be able to do, so that's a big victory for us if we can make sure it gets totally across the finish line in the next couple of weeks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you again.
Everybody up?
No.
Okay. Now we'll go to, uh, C, item one.
Public hearing, consideration of a special use permit request for an existing auto de-
for an existing auto display, sales and repair facility, and three associated variances on 4.5 acres located at 1515 South Stemmons Freeway. The applicant proposes to redevelop the site by constructing a new facility with parking at the rear of the site. On May 2nd, 2017, P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of five to oh. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance and three associated variances as set forth in the caption. We have Planning Director Richard Lutke, Clay Curtis from McRight &amp; Smith, and Drew Dorfski from Claymore Engineering, all here to answer any questions.
And I don't have a card on this. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for the redevelopment and expansion of an existing auto display, sales, outdoor, and repair facility on an approximately 4.54 acre tract of land out of the William King Survey abstract number 697, located on the northwest corner of South Stemmons Freeway, I-35 East, and Country Ridge Road at 1515 South Stemmons Freeway and Zoned Light Industrial District LI, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing two. Consideration of a zone change request from specific use landfill accessory use district to specific use landfill accessory use district by approving an amended engineering site plan on a 9.86 acre lot located on the southeast quadrant of Huffines Boulevard and Stonewall Drive. This request is to amend the engineering site plan approved in November of 2016 in order to add 3,300 square feet of building area and 30 truck parking spaces and to replace a proposed board on board fence with an ornamental metal fence and a chain leak fence. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to oh. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Lutke, Planning Director, Bill Berry from Cambridge Companies for Republics, and Steve Homeyer available for questions.
Okay. I don't have any other cards on this. Is there a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion, second to close. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
This is an ordinance of the Louis-
We have approved. Move to approve.
Oh, a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 9.86 acres, legally described as Lot 1, Block A, Louisville Republic Edition, located on the southeast quadrant of Huffines Boulevard and Stonewall Drive from specific use landfill accessory uses district zoning to specific use landfill accessory uses district zoning by approving an amended engineering site plan, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number three. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from agricultural open space district to single family residential district on .999 acres located at 736 South Poldris Street. The owner plans to plat and build a new single family home on the property. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to oh. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Planning Director Richard Lutke here to answer any questions.
Okay. I do not have any speaker cards on this. Do you have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Does anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning a 0.999 acre tract of land out of the E. Pickett Survey abstract number 1014, located at 736 South Poldris Street, from agriculture open space district AO zoning to single family residential district R-7.5 zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for a repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number four. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from general business district to old center business district on 0.207 acres located at 105 West Main Street, 109 West Main Street, 115 West Main Street, and 119 West Main Street. This zone change will aid in the redevelopment of these properties and is consistent with the Old Town Master Plan. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Planning Director Richard Lutke and Bill Peck both available for questions.
Okay. I don't have any other speaker cards on this. Do you have a motion to close? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.207 acres out of the J.W. King Survey abstract number 696, legally described as portions of lots 2 and 3, Block 6, original town of Louisville, located on the north side of West Main Street, approximately 54 feet west of South Mill Street, at 105 West Main Street, 109 West Main Street, 115 West Main Street, and 119 West Main Street, from general business district GB zoning to Old Town Center District OTC zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability and a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. We have a speaker card from Ruth Ann Brockway.
If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ruth Ann Brockway, 113 Willowbrook, Louisville. As a former volunteer at the Denton County Historical Museum, I'm very supportive of preserving history. And I applaud the Louisville Artifacts item on the consent agenda tonight. I would also like to advocate for two specific topics to be displayed at the new Visitor Information Center that's going to be on Main Street. Both of these historic sites involve Louisville Lake. We have a historical marker about the fossils from the archaeology dig. But I rarely see any publicity about that. And because the marker is at the very back of the park, I would say the majority of visitors have no idea. Also, I know you have a poster here in this building from the 1969 concert featuring Janis Joplin and other iconic musicians at our own music festival that preceded Woodstock. But that's the only place in town I've ever seen that poster. And I think it would be appropriate to put in the new visitor center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen subrequests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no cards.
Okay, we do have a request from staff to pull item number 12, that it is no longer necessary. Does someone have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 12.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And item 12, we don't have to take any action, correct? Okay.
Item 13. Consideration of a variance to Section 2-201 regarding waiving fees associated with American Amateur Youth Baseball Alliance's tournament. This is the 11th year of this event, which will be held on June 24th through June 30th, 2017, and July 8th through July 14th, 2017, at Lone Star Toyota of Louisville Railroad Park Baseball Complex and Louisville Lake Park Baseball Complex. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. We have Tracy Black from Flower Mound Youth Sports Association here to address any questions.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
Agenda item 14. Discussion and consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, committees. On June 30th, various terms of office on the city boards, commissions, and committees will be expiring. City council needs to identify interview teams, interview dates, and determine which team will interview which board, commission, or committee. The recommendation is that the city council proceed with the appointment process.
Okay. Julie, what do we need to do on this tonight? We did hand out a list. Do you wanna read that list or?
Read it into the record.
Go ahead.
Interview teams of Mayor Pro Tem Gilmore and Councilman Jones will interview the Library Board, Louisville 2025 Advisory Board, Park Board, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Zoning Board of Adjustment. Councilman Ferguson and Councilman Daniels will interview Arts Advisory Board, Oil and Gas Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Animal Services Advisory Committee, TIF Number 1, and TIF Number 2. Mayor Durham will interview Louisville Housing Finance Corporation, Louisville Industrial Development Corporation, Louisville Local Government Corporation, Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, and Old Town Design Review Committee.
Do we have a motion?
Have, so moved as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the list as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We're down to reports. And we already had the one from Representative Simmons. Go ahead. Not Nika.
Sir.
Okay. Introduce yourself.
Mr. Button.
My name's Stacy Anaya. I'm the new Parks Recreation Director. And I'm really excited to be here and join this great team here in Louisville and expand the green and connect the trails and just generally preach the gospel of play and what it can do for a community.
Good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Lake progress.
The things, Mayor, the lake is full. It's about four tenths above the conservation pool. You may also notice that the City Hall fountains are not full. We did have to drain those down again. The last time we filled them up, the lights had not been fixed. There's a circuit board, something that had to be sent back to the manufacturer. So we've received that. We drained it down. We're replacing the board. The colored lights should be functioning as we fill the fountain back up and put it back into service. One other thing, the Stephen Albach's Public Service Center sign is complete. If y'all have not had a chance to go by there, take a look at that. Sign looks really nice. And then you'll also notice new lights in this room. They spent the last three weeks replacing them. They're all LED, high-efficiency lights, much more energy efficient, and should last five years without needing to be replaced.
Okay, thank you. Come down. Eric, nothing there? Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted, we, item 12 that we pulled from the consent agenda, always like to brag back on Keep Louisville Beautiful Again. And one of the things with item 12 is that is $290,000 that they received from an award. And that award was the Governor's Community Achievement Award. And so that comes from the community. That comes from Louisville that is out there working and picking up trash and doing projects and everything that Keep Louisville Beautiful does. So that project in item 12 is being funded by the hard work from the volunteers of the city. So I think that's something special, and I hate to see that pass by without mentioning it. So that's it.
No report. TJ?
Just wanna remind everybody that tomorrow is the Sounds of Louisville concert. That's gonna start at 7:00 PM. But before that, from 4:00 to 8:00, the Louisville Farmers Market will be shifting to Tuesday. So you'll be able to come down, do a little shopping, listen to some music. It's gonna be a great opportunity to get a whole bunch of stuff done in the middle of the evening. So come on down. I think it's Crosby, Stills, Nash &amp; Young Tribute Band. So that'll be the music, so it'll be pretty good music as well. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Speaker Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. So that four tenths above conservation is just perfect for the upcoming International Watercross Tournament this weekend. That I think is gonna be a lot of fun. We got kinda washed out on this last year. But it's been taking a while to get it put together. We, you know, years ago had the speedboat races, but the lake really isn't suitable for that anymore. So this is gonna be, I think, prove to be a very entertaining, very interesting, fun event. It's gonna draw competitors from all over the world. The whole International Watercross Tournament moves, or competition, moves literally around the world. So it kinda puts us very much on the world map to have that event here. So mark your calendar for that. June 10th, this Saturday, is also gonna be a busy day because if you're done and through with the watercross for the day, you can show up at Texas Toons at the MCL Grand, where we're gonna have John Ford Cooley of the, for those who remember England Dan and John Ford Cooley. So native Dallas kid and great entertainer, it's gonna be a great concert. If you don't have your tickets, I imagine there's still a few left. But I would say you better get them because they will sell out. Black Box Concert Series will continue with the return of Tom Faulkner and also Michael Hearn. And these guys have been a big hit. So another one that will probably sell out, in fact, I would predict that will sell out, June 25th. And so get your tickets on that one, too. We've got KLB at MCL Grand doing a gardening secrets class called Gardening for the Wildlife on June 15th. Sounds of Louisville, of course, every Tuesday as mentioned through June and July, along with the Farmers Market. And June 17th, just a week after the Pro Watercross, we have Best Little Brew Fest in Texas. So, and that's been just an event that's grown and grown and grown from the very first time. It's just exploded. So get there early. There are VIP passes that get you in ahead of the crowd and let you sample some things that may otherwise be sold out. So go to BLB Fit or Best Little Brew Fest in Texas and get your tickets there. Acoustic jams, always Friday nights at the MCL Grand, presented by the Visual Arts League. Increasing turnout every time and phenomenal artists, and it's free. And then finally, Urban Texas will continue as the art exhibit in the MCL Grand Art Gallery through June 17th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Assistant City Attorney, thanks for being here tonight. Julie, do you have anything to add? Julie, do you have anything to add about the election?
I do. I just want to remind everyone tomorrow's the last day to early vote, and then Election Day will be this Saturday, June 10th, for the runoff election.
Or one more thing to do on June 10th.
Officer, thanks for being here and your service to the community. Thank you. Next item we have is item H. Close session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, number one, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and number two, Section 551.087, Economic Development Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We'll now go into closed session. Waiting back to order. Is there any action that we need to take?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We adjourn. See you later.